But if we do the hearing, I would ask them that no intervening business, votes, or business be conducted tonight.
In other words, as far as delegation business?
Correct.
Okay, is that what, like, just motions, if there's any announcements, like the delegation meeting? I could do that, right? That would, you know, by your standards.
Where in Roberts' rules does that say that? I looked through Roberts' rules, did not find that.
Oh, well, may I answer, Mr. Chair?
All right, yes, go ahead, please.
According to Roberts', purpose of recesses is for short breaks. It's extremely unusual for them to go beyond the end of the business day. Having said that, Roberts' is irrelevant because if you do go beyond the end of the business day, then the continuation must be properly publicly noticed according to RSA 91A.
The continuation of that meeting, this is not that meeting, this is a different meeting. According to Roberts' rule, when I look through it on pages here, one recess meeting does not impact the other one.
May I respond, Mr. Chair?
Yes, it's a different question.
Thank you. The continuation of the meeting has to occur according to RSA 91A. Roberts' is irrelevant at that point.
That's dealing with the prior meeting.
If we recess, we leave the room, we come back, that's fine. And if you read deeper into Roberts', you'll find that's actually the purpose of a recess. We didn't do that. We all left and quite a bit of time has ensued.
Point of order.
Yes.
What we can do, if you want to reconvene it, we can adjourn. Takes one simple majority to adjourn. So if we want to open it up to recess, we could then, Mr. Chairman, go into a meeting and then adjourn.
May I reply, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Representative Smith.
We had hoped that would occur, and if we were obeying the state law, that would have been part of this agenda and actually the first order of business considering that there's a pending motion. That is not what occurred, though.
So therefore, if I understand the logic, what you're saying, this meeting should not be carried.
I'm sorry?
If I understand the logic, according to what you're saying with Roberts' rules, we should not be having this meeting. So therefore, I think we should adjourn it.
May I reply, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Representative Smith.
Thank you. I didn't want to get into a back and forth, that's also improper. So, yeah, that's our preference. If the delegation prefers to be the public and receive the information being presented tonight without voting or operating as a body, that's technically a 91A violation. Having said that, you did post the hearing properly, but votes since we're a body in recess would obviously be improper. So what I'd suggest is between now and the actual vote on the budget itself
Okay.
that a separate meeting be called, the purpose of which is to come out of recess and address the pending motion before the body.
Okay.
That might tidy it up.
Okay, so at least, though, we should proceed with the public hearing on the commissioner's budget.
I can advise you to do that, I won't object if you do it, but I would ask that the setting a county convention date, you can just do that, Mr. Chair, you don't actually have to have us vote on it.
Okay.
So you could look around the room for objections
Okay.
and then just do it, but that other old business, other new business, meeting minutes, review, and votes to accept them are probably improper.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Representative Tanner.
Could I ask why this wasn't brought up before we met today, seeing as this meeting has been posted, that it seems like that objection should have come up earlier?
Sorry, is that a question for you?
Yeah, I guess that's a question of you, Representative.
I've been pretty busy and assumed it would be taken care of, but here we are.
And I don't know, okay, and I didn't, haven't received any communications from any delegation member about this hearing particularly being improper, but, you know, maybe you do raise some good points, Representative Smith, because we do eventually have to come out of recess for the meeting, but I figured this is, as I said, a county budget hearing. It was, we were not really going to, at this particular hearing, which is at six o'clock, we were not going to talk really about the nursing, and we were talking about the county budget tonight.
Let's not do it tonight.
Different topic. So, and it's mainly, as I said, it's more for the commissioners to inform us of what they would like in the, as they propose the county budget for us to listen. Normally, these hearings, you know, it's mainly, from my experience, and I've been here at the commissioner's show anyway, and this is just, but it's part of state law that we have to do it this way. As a part of me once said, that ought to be different, but that's, you know, I don't, unfortunately, that's the way it is right now.
This meeting, this recess, you can do that.
So, um, yes, go ahead, please.
So, just to be clear, we will not be engaging in any delegation procedures or voting, we are just here to hear the county budget presentation.
Okay.
Is that, is that clear? I mean, is that what I'm hearing here?
Well, that's the main purpose of this hearing, I mean, if we had time to take care of minutes, but we can defer that, part of it's EFC anyway, but I was just trying to make it convenient. Yes, go ahead, please.
So therefore, on item seven of the agenda, we cannot take action tonight?
Yeah. Yeah, we can decide not to take it up either, you know, as well. So I will, I see your point is well taken, Representative Smith, and so we will not take any votes tonight on the minutes or anything else. I mean, that's, I will agree to do that, because I see, I see the point you're making, but I think it's important that we hear from the commissioners about their proposed county budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. So if you don't mind, if we could just introduce ourselves and go around the room, starting with Representative Tanner, please, and those who are present, please.
Thank you. I'm Representative Tanner. I represent District Nine, which is a flotarial in Sullivan County, incorporating the towns of Plainfield, Cornish, Grantham, Newport, Sunapee, Unity, and Springfield. And Croydon, I'm sorry. Don't forget. I would have said it twice. Okay. Sue Gottling, Sullivan District Two, representing Sunapee and Croydon.
Gary Merchant, representing Sullivan County District Four, Ward Two in Claremont, New Hampshire.
Walt Stapleton, representing Claremont, Ward Three, Sullivan County District Five.
Joe Osgood, County Commissioner, District One, Claremont and Cornish and Plainfield. Uh, sorry, Claremont and Cornish, but because I've been on the ballot in every town, I feel as though I'm representing the county.
George Hebert, Sullivan County Commissioner.
Ben Nelson, Sullivan County Commissioner.
Derek Furlan, Sullivan County Manager.
John Callum, Sunday, pardon me, Unity, Newport, Sullivan District Six.
Representative Judy Aaron, I represent Sullivan County District Seven, which is Acworth, Goshen, Langdon, Lymster, and Washington.
Skip Rollins, District Six, Newport, Unity.
Representative Stephen Smith, Sullivan Eleven, Acworth, Charlestown, Goshen, Langdon, Lymster, and Washington.
Andrew Lahren, Ward One, Claremont, Sullivan Three.
And again, I'm John Flutier, Chair of the delegation, representing the entire Sullivan County District Ten, the entire city of Claremont. Okay, now, one of the, okay, I'm sorry, okay, go ahead, please, Representative Solon, I'm sorry.
That's right, Brian Solon, Sullivan County District One, operating from remote from the beautiful Lake Sunapee State Park, Lake, Lake, I'm Bago State Park, sorry.
Representative Lee Oxnum, also representing District One, that's Plainfield, Springfield, Cornish, and Grantham.
Representative Oxnum, Sullivan, but this Zoom thing, I'm still getting used to it. All right, and now I would like to turn it, I mean, have the Board of Commissioners introduce themselves, and I think without objection, unless from anybody, I will turn it over to the commissioners, because as I said earlier, it's more their hearing, and I think to expedite matters, I will turn it over to the Chair of the Commissioners, George Hebert, he can introduce he and his fellow commissioners and the county manager and the rest of the county department heads, please. Commissioner Hebert, please.
George Hebert, Sullivan County Chair, Ben Nelson, Sullivan County Commissioner, and Joe Osgood, Sullivan County Commissioner, and our county manager, Derek Furlan. Are you going to present this?
Yep. You want me to take it away?
Sure.
All right. All right, thanks, Commissioner Hebert. I'd like to acknowledge our department heads that are here. So in the back of the room, we have our nursing home administrator, Ted Purdy, our Director of Natural Resources, Lionel Chu, Sheriff John Simons, our Register of Deeds, Janet Gibson, Superintendent at the Department of Corrections, Dave Barry, the Director of Facilities and Operations, Mary Hebert, the UNH Cooperative Extension Site Lead, Penelope Whitman, and our Director of Nursing at Sullivan County Healthcare, April Bartley. And also from the Commissioner's Office, helping us out, Sharon Callum and Kirsten Shea. So thank everybody for attending tonight and hopefully tuning in at home. Go to the projection mode. There we go, okay. Next slide. This is the same format that we've used in the last couple of years, so hopefully it should look familiar. Okay. All right, sorry about that. So the overview slide looks a lot like last year, so let's press on. Slide. Quick overview of our county functions, obviously, we have two campuses for the county operations, one in Newport, one in Unity. Our elected officials are all in the Newport campus, the County Attorney's Office, the Sheriff, and the Registry of Deeds. The Commissioner's Office is also in Newport, that's where I work, as well as our front office staff. And the UNH Cooperative Extension Office is also located in Newport, right on Main Street, two doors down from where the Commissioner's Office is. Over in Unity, the bulk of the county operations, the nursing homes, Sullivan County Healthcare, the jail, and our facilities and operations, human resources, and natural resources departments. We shared these last year, there's no change in terms of our three overarching strategic goals. We are fundamentally in the people business, and so investing in our people remains our top priority. Our second goal is being smart about how we use the resources that were given by the taxpayers of Sullivan County, making sure that we are making sound decisions that are based on data and constantly looking for ways to innovate. And the last goal of exercising responsible regional leadership just acknowledges that there are some things that when we work together naturally are convened by the county. We can help coordinate things that go across municipal lines, in some cases, it's coordinating with the state or federal agencies to help acquire and deliver those resources back here at home. The most recent, the last bullet on the slide, is a really good example of that with the HUD lead paint abatement program, which it was an effort that was primarily led by the city of Claremont, but in order to compete for those grant funds, it made sense for the county to apply on behalf of the entire county, so of course, it benefits the city of Claremont while benefiting everybody else as well. Next slide. So for a quick year in review before we get to the FY22 budget, we did this last year, I thought it worked pretty well, because it's always good to look back and see just how much you've done, and really, the primary focus obviously was all about COVID. We did battle a couple of outbreaks in the jail and in the nursing home, and it was really pretty taxing for everybody involved, both staff, residents, inmates, our families in the community, so, but in spite of all that, we still managed to accomplish a lot, and it's in the course of building these slides that you go, holy smokes, we really were able to stay pretty engaged in a lot of other things besides COVID. But as I said, COVID was absolutely our paramount responsibility. And the things that we learned about our staff, and we, I made a comment early on in one of our first staff meetings, and that was well over a year ago, I said to the department heads, I said, "We're going to learn a lot about our team over this next, however long this lasts." Had no idea it would last this long. And we did learn a lot about our team, and the overwhelming majority of things we learned were all very positive. You see the words I chose here, the toughness and the resilience, being able to bounce back and just kind of grit through it, and you can only do that if you're very dedicated to what you do and the people that you serve. And so I think this was really a shining moment for the men and women that work in Sullivan County to deliver those services for the people, everybody in this room, our taxpayers, our residents, our inmates. It was a difficult year, to be sure, but our communities were great, we had tremendous outpourings of support, we had a lot of great conversations with family members. I mean, this couldn't have been any tougher than, than those folks, you know, who have loved ones that are in the nursing home and you can't visit them for weeks and months on end. Our staff was, was, was great with trying to be flexible, we started with window visits, we acquired some iPads and tablets to facilitate electronic visitation, we hired a visitation coordinator for the time when we were able to do, under some kind of awkward restrictions, but they were face to face, sort of, from across the room. So we did everything that we could to try to make those connections and keep those connections alive, but it was difficult, there's no two ways around it. And so by and large, all of our families were very understanding, very supportive, and really, the community, the comments that you'd see on Facebook posts about what our nursing staff in particular, as well as all the other support staff, it was really great to see, it was very uplifting, because we had our share of pretty dark days. So now, just a few pictures to kind of, I think they do a better job than I could have explained in just what was going on, but here you can see, our vaccinations started June 6th in the nursing home, which was probably the cruelest twist of irony, because we learned of our first outbreak on, as I say, June, January. We learned of our first outbreak on January 7th. So just when we thought we were at the finish line after going for just about 10 months with, with zero COVID positive cases in staff and residents, and here we are, lining up to get the vaccine, and then the very next day, we got news that we had, a couple of residents had tested positive, so that was a real gut punch. But I mentioned the community support, the picture on the right is really indicative of the kind of overwhelming response we had. This one was the, the Rotarians from Claremont, actually Representative Merchant, I believe, is the masked man on the left, and they helped out with donating some PPE to our staff. So that was the kind of thing that we saw over and over and over again, that was really quite amazing. Next slide. So more shots of, of life with COVID. The upper right, that was our summer inmate construction program here in the tech center. And instead of building what they were planning on building, they, at the last minute, with the help of Superintendent Berry and Dr. Herzog and Mike Bennett, the instructor at the tech center, they went ahead and built the COVID, portable COVID screens for all the teachers in SAU 6, so here for Claremont and Unity, to help them prepare for the upcoming school year in hopes of trying to facilitate in-person instruction. At the bottom center, we had a drive-by parade, and that gentleman in the wheelchair is a veteran, that, I believe that was Veterans Day Parade. The lower left corner, you know, we had long-term staff that retired, and so we tried to find a way to honor them, that happened to be Melissa Doobie, who retired after 48 years of service to the county, and it just felt really awful to not send her off in a proper way that we probably would have in a non-COVID year, but we did the best we could. And so there you see Ted walking through the handshake and cake line. And again, it's probably not as, as great as it would have been in any other year, but we had to do something, and those were the types of functions that we had to continue to execute in spite of the daily focus on COVID. And the top center, you know, that's just our staff frankly being kind of goofy with various themed dress-up days to try to keep the mood light and try to keep everybody's spirits up, and so we just saw that again and again this past year. Next slide. The next major development for the, for FY21 was, we got started on Sullivan House, and there's kind of a cool before and after, I didn't quite get the same aspect ratio, but to get the idea. The picture on the right was taken, I think, just about a week and a half ago, and you can see the windows on the upper floor are in, so it's going to have a much different curbside appeal now that the paint's been sandblasted, and it's going to have the, the black trim instead of the white trim, but we're really pleased with how that's coming along. Next slide. Here's a few shots of the inside, the framing is well underway, the bottom left corner is the old basement where the printing presses were located, and that's where the communal kitchen will be, and so the, the foundation had to be dug up to run all new plumbing, so encouraging job so far. Next slide. We also replaced the sheriff's vehicles. You know, they used to have some Impalas that were tired, and, and our maintenance bill every year was increasing, so last year, the delegation authorized the purchase of six vehicles, and this year's budget contains the request to purchase the other two. So you can see we've changed from sedans to SUVs, as the, the development and the design of, of law enforcement vehicles has evolved, sedans are really too small in terms of the backseat size for inmate transport, which is the sheriff's primary, primary mission, so it necessitated us to step up to Dodge Durango's, but fortunately, the sheriff was able to work a pretty good deal with the Dodge dealer here in Claremont, and so we got a pretty decent price on these vehicles, they look really sharp. And then that logo on the lower right is a, is a blow up of what's actually on the rear quarter panel with the sheriff's motto, "It's all about public service." And then I mentioned the HUD lead grant, so here's some pictures from that program. In fact, the upper right was taken about, what, four hours ago?
I was just wondering.
Oh, no, six hours ago, that was from today. So Commissioner Osgood and I had a chance to go down to Concord and accept a tax credit award from the Community Development Finance Authority in the amount of $108,000, which will provide us with some additional funding to augment the 1.7 that we received last year, so that was pretty good news. Picture there with Senator Ward, who attended this morning as well. The lower right is from the first bid walkthrough of when the first projects were, after we do a lead inspection, we develop a statement of work and then have contractors come in and produce bids, and so that was an inaction photo from the very first bid walk. So the response has been good, we've inspected over two dozen properties, so we're well ahead of schedule as far as our metrics, and we have to report every quarter back to HUD, and we are awarding the first contracts this week to get, to actually get the work done on, on the first couple of units, so pretty exciting stuff. Next slide. And this is another late-breaking story, I think it was two weeks ago that we got word of the, this is a robot courtesy of the University of New Hampshire, it's, it's one of the many partnerships that Superintendent Berry leverages to improve the services at the Department of Corrections. That article also happened to be from today, it showed in today's e-ticker, and it frankly helped me fill up the slide a little bit better than that tall skinny picture of the robot, but as you can see in the, the tagline is, is it helps people in crisis. This is a device that can be sent in if you're, if there are concerns about the safety and security of either the inmates or the staff engaging with an inmate who is in crisis, but it's the range of services that can be delivered and connected to that individual, whether it's a telehealth appointment with a medical provider, it could be something like tutoring and education with a, with a professor provided remotely via the robot, or conceivably a connection with a family member, if there's something going on that they absolutely need to try to get in touch with somebody. So a lot of potential applications, and this is provided at no cost to the county taxpayers, and it's a pilot project, so this is, deploying this unit helps UNH learn and get better, and so as they roll this out to other facilities, they'll learn from the things that we've done as we, as we test drive this robot. Next slide. We also continued our regional economic profile efforts, that's predominantly the work of Penelope Whitman in the back, she's our, not only the site lead for the Cooperative Extension, but she's the Community and Economic Development Field Specialist. We have to work on shortening that job title, because it's really hard to get out, especially when you're in a hurry. The three task forces that were established as part of the regional economic profile, the Workforce Development Task Force, the Economic Infrastructure Task Force, and the Regional Identity and Quality of Life Task Force, a lot of work behind the scenes. The photographs on the periphery are all from our adult education programs, which are grants that were funded by the county and fall under that Workforce Development Task Force. So the one on the right, closest to me, is from the plumbing and heating class that we did right here in the tech center over the winter. The lower left is from a welding class that we did in Newport, and the upper left is from an LNA class that's also being done in Newport. We've, we're excited about the early returns of this program, the, the whole plan design was geared towards trying to connect adults that are either underemployed or unemployed and actually get them hired in the field. So this isn't just, well, I'd really like to learn to weld someday, so I want to go do it, because I might do it in my garage. We had somebody from the HR Director of Can-Am attend this class to talk to the students, and actually, I believe at least one person was hired at Can-Am and perhaps two, but around 20% of everybody that's graduated from these classes has gotten employed in that field. So as far as a first step goes, I think it's very encouraging, and it's our goal to keep this program going, continue to gain momentum, continue to build relationships with our employers, as well as the people in our area, frankly, that, that want to look to improve their lot in life with a better job, and see if we can make that number even higher. And then the middle logo is really exciting, that's our, our regional branding and marketing, regional identity task force, and so the Sugar River region was a concept that we talked about and decided on in the fall, and we rolled it out with a lot of small group interactions, primarily Penelope and myself, and so we've, that has now transitioned to the establishment of a destination council, which is comprised of about 15 people from around the county, to help us think about the types of activities and things that we need to do to help our region move forward in terms of the recreational tourism, the branding, the marketing, and really making Sullivan County an attractive destination for people to visit and perhaps decide to stay for a bit longer, as well as marketing it to the people that have lived here forever and might not even know about some of the wonderful treasures that we've got right here at home. And in that respect, it's not about attracting people to move here, it's just about boosting pride and, and having a sense of, hey, this is my home and it's pretty cool, because you know, it's, it is easy to oftentimes complain or focus on the negatives about where you live, but there's so much great stuff that we have here in Sullivan County and the Sugar River region to celebrate, so. That logo was the result of a $600 investment on a, on a, on a website called 99 Designs, the winning designer is actually in Spain, so we've, we've never met him, but it was pretty cool. We didn't really provide a whole lot of guidance, we just sort of punched in some stuff, and we set it up as a contest, and within 10 days, we had a logo that looked just like that, but without the color, and the addition of color was kind of a, was a part two, and the reason for that was to acknowledge the, the heavy presence of the maple industry in our area, and so we thought, well, the, the colors, obviously maple trees, and with maple trees, you get syrup and you get leaf peepers, so, anyway, it was a pretty fun project. Next slide. And our natural resources team was also pretty busy, so during the pandemic, a lot of the work that they do was curtailed, whether it's Lionel or Dawn Dextray's going out into the classrooms to, to do some hands-on learning, when there's no schooling session, then it's really hard to conduct those sessions. So rather than complain about it, they got busy and they built a new trail on the county property, and it's fantastic, and we opened it up last year, it's the Glidden Ridge Trail, it's got a dynamite overlook, you can see Lionel there in the bottom picture, the upper right one is the one that I took in the fall when we opened the trail. So some good stuff there, and then the backdrop, it's, it's a faded watermark, but it's the little trail map that we produced. So there's some pretty neat stuff on the county property, so if you're ever there and want to go for a good little short hike, check it out. We also talked a lot about the nursing home renovation, I won't say much more about it than that, because we're going to talk about it after this, but obviously, it was in the paper, it seemed like every week we had something new going on that was newsworthy and notable. Next slide. And then one of the unexpected things, I think, that, that nobody really saw coming was the, the real boom in local real estate. I mean, Janet was absolutely out of her mind with, with her team trying to process between the refinancing packages because interest rates were so low, or just the sheer number of out-of-staters coming up to find their little slice of heaven and maybe escape the city. And so when I, I collected some data, so this table is taken from, from DRA's report that was published in, just last May, May of 2021. And so what you can see is our, our equalized valuation for the total county is up 22% just in the last five years. Most of that growth has actually been in the last three years. So if you look at the, the second column from the left, this is our current equalized valuation of just over $5.5 billion. Last year, it was 5.3 billion, just under 5.3 billion, so year over year, a 4.25% increase. And then you can see the percent changes, the dollar value changes, and it's kind of the rank by town within the county. And it's, and it's, frankly, it's surprising, there's growth in places that maybe haven't seen a lot of growth in recent years, and I think that's good news for the entire county.
That's a good question, so according to this chart, the higher the rank, the lower the valuation increase, is that a coincidence?
No, the, the, the ranked is the, is this, is this all the dollars change, just ranked in words?
Okay.
So it's, yeah. I didn't do, I didn't do it by percentage, because percentages could be a tyranny of small numbers, so I just was ranking the, the change in dollars by community.
Okay. So now that wraps up my discussion on FY21. So now, shifting gears to the fiscal year '22, just some big picture thoughts, the things that we were thinking about when we sat down, and the department heads and I built the budget, and we shared it with the commissioners, and ultimately, the Executive Finance Committee. We really, as a county, and these are things that don't necessarily reflect in the budget, but they're things that we are definitely thinking about, and that is, number one, the transition from COVID as being a crisis management response to really a, a recovery operation. And we're going to look internally, this has been, as I mentioned before, it's been a very trying 15 months on a lot of people, but primarily our staff, who are honestly mentally and physically exhausted. We have seen, the market for healthcare workers has responded in a way that I think is going to be a challenge for the county. A lot of other facilities are now offering pretty healthy hourly wage rates, and we've had a number of employees jump ship to pursue those opportunities. We're not panicking, because we'd like to think that the culture and the climate that we're focusing on as part of our first strategic goal is something that will maybe bring those folks back to us at some point, but for now, in the short term, it's absolutely going to put some pressure on our
But for now, in the short term, it's absolutely going to put some pressure on our staffing. And so we need to find other ways to make sure people are taking time off. That's been the biggest thing that I think that's been sacrificed over this past year is frankly, when, when you've got anywhere from three people to 15 people that are out because of COVID, nobody can take time off and people are working overtime in addition to that. So we have a worn out team and we just have to acknowledge that and, and address it as the year goes on. And then the uncertainty regarding the nursing home renovation, maybe some unexpected good news was the 8.38 million in the American Rescue Plan Act funding that we, we received the first half of it. And so we'll get the second half of it in a year's time. And we are working on a plan of the various things that we could fund with that. Obviously we could write probably one check and have it all go to the nursing home renovation. However, there are many eligible uses for that funding. And so there have been some questions from both the delegation and the commissioners about what other initiatives might we look to support in the county using that funding? So we are going to build a plan and work it back up through the commissioners and, and go from there. There's been another question about a potential federal infrastructure bill and when will it come, what will be in it? And the answer to all that is we don't know yet and we were hoping to have some prospective legislation before the July 4th holiday to give us an idea of what the priorities are and how many dollars. But you all can watch the news as, as well as I can. It seems to change every day, so we'll just keep monitoring it and go from there. And we also put in a $600,000 planning wedge as a placeholder in the FY22 budget in case we proceed with a renovation project, even if we don't know what the actual bond amount will be, because the first payment would be in this fiscal year, an interest only payment. And obviously the exact amount will vary, so we just picked 600,000 as kind of a ballpark to cover us. So if the project does not move forward, then this will be a line item in the budget that we can, we can talk about as the year goes on. And it also includes significant one-time COVID relief money. I've got another slide later in the presentation that will specify all of the different pots of money that we got over the year. But the bottom line is we have a, a perfect storm of factors. And again, there's another slide that I'll get to in a minute, that's putting a lot of pressure on our 22 budget. Go ahead. So finally, the big reveal, what am I, slide 18, I'm over halfway done here. Here are the top line numbers of our 22 proposed budget, which is in the right-hand column. And the, on the left next to it is our final delegation budget from our FY21 budget. So you just do a quick side-by-side comparison. I mentioned in this, this column here, the fund balance to reduce the tax rate. That's actually skewed a little bit because it does include all that one-time money. We actually don't have any unassigned fund balance money left because last year we crossed over our, our policy limit that's set. So we don't have any money coming out of the bank to offset taxes this year. Our transfers to reserves, you can see the number there, but the big one is at the bottom. And you know, I can't dance around it, but it's a 9.76% increase over last year. So that, you know, for anybody that's been in Sullivan County for the last 11 years, that's going to be a bit of a shock. But when you convert it to actual dollars and cents, that 9.76% increase would result in a, an annual increase in taxes of just over $37 for their proverbial $150,000 home.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Any questions? Or you take the questions?
Oh, it's up, I'm okay if.
If you're okay with that, I'm okay with it.
It's okay Judy.
My question is then that this budget that you're presenting addresses the structural deficit that is in the budget currently?
It does. It makes a lot of progress. I wouldn't, I'm not going to claim that it fixes it entirely, but it makes significant progress towards that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, next slide. Nothing?
Okay, hit that button. Yeah, do that.
Okay, now I have a couple of slides that hit some highlights and they're kind of by theme. So the first one, I, I mentioned the perfect storm. So okay, what, what goes into that perfect storm? And there's four main drivers that are leading us to this 9.76% increase. The first two are shown in the, in the graph on the left. So it's the use of unassigned fund balance and it's our current fiscal year, which is FY21. And the, and the variances, the positive variances, so that's if we're above revenue or below expenses. If you add those things up and you get a positive number, then we end up with a positive variance that if we did nothing with it, would be deposited in the bank and it would become unassigned fund balance after we cross over fiscal years. Those variances were quite a bit less this year because of COVID. It, it put a hurting on our, our nursing home revenues. The two times that we were in outbreak, we're not allowed to bring on new admissions. So over the weeks that we're in outbreak, our census just kind of keeps going down and with it our revenue. For the whole year, we're very close to break even, but it's, you know, we're just coming out of outbreak now from the second, second one that we had. And so I, it'll remain to be seen kind of how the last, and of course those reports lag by a month, so we won't really know until July exactly where the FY21 ends up for the nursing home revenues. On our expense side, we frankly had more expenses. We're buying PPE, we were doing other things that we didn't have to do in a normal year. Some of those expenses were reimbursed by Gopher, but not all of them. And so again, it just, it cuts into those variances, which if we're banking on a set amount to be rolled over to the future year and that amount gets smaller, well, obviously it's going to lead to the, the issue. So that's some of the factors of the perfect storm. So the graph kind of tells the story. I mentioned how last year we crossed below our threshold for the unassigned fund balance. So the orange piece of this, of these bars is the amount that's coming from the unassigned fund balance. And there's nothing there this year because we crossed below the threshold. So we're a couple hundred thousand dollars below what we set for a policy level. Therefore, if we continue to take from it, we'll potentially start bouncing checks come December before we get our, our property tax revenues from the municipalities. The number in blue is the variances that I talked about. And you can see for the last couple of years, it was pretty consistently around 1.3 to 1.5 million. And that represents about a 4% total variance. So that's again, some combination of being either above revenue or below your expense budget. And we'd like to target around 3% to 4% and we've been pretty consistent. But this year, as I mentioned, because revenues are, are being squeezed and our expenses were, were increased because of COVID, there's just simply less there to roll forward. So last year we rolled forward 1.3 million and we took 1.1 million out of the bank from our pro-share surplus. And so we had nearly $2.5 million of, of tax offsets. And this year by comparison, it's $800,000. So that gap has to come from somewhere. So that's one of the things that's contributing to that 9.76% increase. I talked about pro-share. So that's the, the graph here in the lower right. So you can see again, for many, many years that was consistent. And so we had budgeted around 2 million, sometimes a little less. Ted has a very uncanny way of coming out pretty darn close to the penny on this. But you can see in 2018, we got this huge spike. And if you'll recall, that was when the Department of Health and Human Services developed this statewide program known as the Regional Integrated Delivery Networks. There were seven IDNs across the state. We were a part of IDN1. And so there was a system that they devised or worked, collaborated, I guess is probably a, a better word, with the federal government to match additional Medicaid eligible expenses through the nursing home to bring more dollars back to the state of New Hampshire. And so that big number was, was part of that program. We had to give a part of that back to fund the IDN, but the rest of it we got to keep. And so for those two years, they were very good to us and we did a lot of good work with that money. That was where the million and a half dollars for the nursing home design came from. So it didn't come out of our capital reserve. It didn't come out of the taxpayers' pockets. It came out of those additional funds. We also provided the upfront construction funding for the Sullivan House project. That came out of that funding. And you recall, we had many discussions about what we should do in terms of budgeting. Well, we kept the budgeting at 2 million because we simply didn't trust that this was going to last in spite of all the assurances to the contrary. And now that decision looks, looks pretty good because you can see the last couple of years, the pro-share numbers have trailed off considerably this year. In fact, it was last week. So for the members of the EFC, remember we were talking about waiting to see what this number was? And it was confirmed at 2.13 million dollars. Again, we budgeted 2 million, so we do have 130,000 of additional pro-share dollars that we could use. That's not reflected in this budget. So that would be a way to eat at that tax increase a little bit by deploying those dollars to reduce the tax rate. Next slide. And so I've mentioned before, we're in the people business and you know, people, people cost money, but good people are worth it. And we don't have automatic, automatic checkout lanes to replace the things that we do. But simply in a heavily regulated environment, whether it's the nursing home or the jail, we are required to have a certain number of people on shift to do those jobs. So when you look at what people cost, and I, and I copied a little box here to show all of the budget lines that add up to comprise that number. So across the county, roughly 300 staff members cost us about $20 million a year, but you can see all the different things there. It's not just salary, it's health insurance, it's New Hampshire retirement. Again, they're all listed right there, you can read them. So if you take our total expense budget of 34.6 million, I do some adjustments for a couple of things that I don't view as directly being part of our mission. The human services bill is a check that we write to the state every year for long-term care. We'd have to pay that whether we had a county government or not. The community grants, UNH cooperative extension and our bonded debt, since that's over such a long period of time. If I, if I included this in the calculation, it wouldn't change the percentages that much. I've actually done it both ways. If I, if I subtracted all three of these line items, it would, it would be still 69%. But if you include them, it shows that of this adjusted number, our total personnel costs are 72.8% of our budget. And why is that significant? Because if you always, we're always looking for ways to save money. What can we cut? What can we do better, smarter? And unless the answer involves reducing the number of people, you're really going to be challenged to make a meaningful dent in reducing your total budget and, and having good cost control on behalf of Sullivan County's taxpayers. So what are the other things that we spend our money on? Next slide. So I summarized some of our, our other major budget items. I didn't go down every single category because it would be, it would be rather tedious, but it's things like food. Well, okay, obviously we need to have food, but can we be smart about how we buy food? The answer is yes. This is one of the things that Ted and his dietary team have been consistently very, very frugal. That, that, that line item in the budget has not changed, at least since I've been here. And the reason is, is because they've, they've changed suppliers multiple times. I mean, we used to buy almost all of our stuff from Cisco, then it changed to Reinhardt. And when Reinhardt's prices go up, we go to another supplier. So we are very astute in trying to detect and stay ahead of trends that would result in our budget going up. If there's a better way to do it, we try to find that way. Other things like, these are contract services, the Medicare Part A and Part B, but like medical supplies and medical expenses. I mean, we get what we get. That number can be wildly variable. If you, if we take an inmate with serious medical issues, we're on the hook for those and sometimes those can be very significant. And in the past years, they have been, so we do the best we can. There was a request on behalf of the EFC earlier to highlight what we spend on, on computers and software. So those two line items are broken out. Whoops, hip check the screen here. Software, and that was actually an eye-opener even for me. I've never done this analysis, pinpointing software. It's a lot of money, but it's things like our, our financial software, which includes our HR and payroll. It's electronic medical records in the nursing home and the equivalent systems in the jail. We've got, the sheriff has a law enforcement database that we just invested in. So there are a lot of kind of one-off, unique things that we need. The county attorney has a database. The registry of deeds has a database and it's all these, well, not database, but software program that are unique to their functions. It's just not going down to Best Buy and getting a Microsoft Office suite and being able to, to get most of your work done. As far as the IT contract, this is both the contract for complete care that we have with CCI Managed Services here in Clermont, as well as what we budget every year for tech refresh. We try to have our computers done on a four to five-year schedule. And that's a great value and that, that may not jump out at you when you see $260,000, but I can tell you, other counties that have their IT staff in-house will spend that much just for three people alone. And the thing with three people is we've actually got a, a reach back of about 10 people, courtesy of the way CCI structures their, their tech support team. So when you're a county that has your own in-house resources, if one of those people is on leave or on vacation, you've got sometimes one or two people trying to take care of three or 400 accounts. It's really, I think that would be a real challenge. So the way we do it, I think it's smart. I think it's cost effective and you wouldn't necessarily know that just by looking at our budget and say, wow, it's $34 million. What are those guys doing over there? Next slide. I talked a little bit about the variances. This just has a bit more detail. So I said, we normally expect, oh man. Oh no, okay, this is current, I thought I had a typo. Sorry. There's a lot of FYs up here, so sometimes I lose track. So two years ago, we had a 3% to 4%. I told you historically, that's about what we had. This year, I built the budget assuming a 2%. I actually think it's going to be less than that. You know, we built the budget about three months before the end of the, of the current fiscal year. So that is my best guess and my best projection. And our expenses and revenues are not linear. So it's not as simple as saying, well, just divide one, one into 12 and there you go. There's your, there's your glide slope. It's all over the place and so I do the best I can, but I'm rarely right. And, and so we'll see. If I'm wrong, it'll impact our unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. Next slide. So I did talk about the one-time COVID funding. So here are those numbers as I promised. The footstomp here is that of that 8.38 million that, and we've received half of that already, this budget is already spending 100,000 of it. So instead of 8.38, just bookmark 8.28 in your heads if this budget is approved. And that's because the ARPA allowed us to offset lost revenue due to the pandemic. And for us, it was our interest income because when the interest rates went to practically zero, we're getting shellac right now in our, in our budget. And then the Department of Corrections is able to, because Superintendent Barry's been pretty enterprising in taking on inmates from other counties, either putting them through our trails program or having them processed through our work release. That didn't happen either because inmates were really not allowed to transfer due to the pandemic. So that's something to think about as we go forward as well. Slide. Okay, now the traditional bar charts. We're coming down to the end. Again, for the, for those of you that have seen this before, this won't be a surprise. These are our expenses. You can see that it's the nursing home that is roughly a little less than half of our budget. So it's the dollar amount on the bar chart and the percentage is at the bottom, kind of tucked away as a small number there for those of you scoring at home. The next budget, biggest budget item though, surprisingly, is that human services bill that I referenced earlier. And that again, that's, that's a bill that we would have to pay the state regardless. And now here's our revenue and this is by, by our department and/or function. So number one revenue source, the nursing home. Number two is our property taxes. And so I treated the next three a little differently than in years past. So I, I teased out those one-time revenues, the 960,000, because those are one-time. And so that's one of the takeaways as this budget rolls into the next year, I mean, it's never too early to start thinking about FY23. But those, those one-time expenses will not be here and so that'll be another revenue gap potentially that we'll have to think about. The variances are 800,000. So when I, when we built the budget, that was comprised of a $100,000 surplus on our revenue side, again, led primarily by the nursing home, and a $700,000 positive variance on our expense budget, which is calculated at a 2% variance. I don't think it's going to be 2%. I think it's going to be less than that. So as we get closer to the convention, that'll be, we'll probably need to reevaluate that as we get closer to see if that needs to be adjusted. Unfortunately, it's not going to be adjusted in our favor if I had to guess. And then the, the fund balance, just what's coming out of the bank? And the answer to that is zero, which, which matches with that other graph that I showed. And now within the nursing home, since that's our biggest revenue generator, there are many different programs. The biggest one is our Medicaid program, followed by the Medicaid assessment, and then pro-share, which we've talked about, and then Medicare Part A, which is our short-term rehab stays, and then private payers, our next biggest sources of revenue. Next slide. Capital projects, we don't have much this year. Our plate is pretty full, both with nursing home renovation project planning, as well as trying to clear up the last couple of years. We've had a lot of projects that have been appropriated and not executed, partially because of COVID, partially because of some other concerns, particularly at our Newport campus. And so we thought it would make more sense to focus on those priorities and not add[1752.38] Our plate is pretty full, both with nursing home renovation project planning, as well as trying to clear up the last couple of years. We've had a lot of projects that have been appropriated and not executed, partially because of COVID, partially because of some other concerns, particularly at our Newport campus. And so we thought it would make more sense to focus on those priorities and not add more potential projects into the queue, especially because things are still pretty wonky right now in the construction market. So we just figured this was a good year to maybe take a breath. So not much going on in terms of capital. For the sheriff's vehicles, note the, in parentheses, that is funded via the Capital Reserve. So that's coming out of the bank, it's actually not coming out of this budget. We're incorporating it into the budget, obviously, but the revenue is coming out of the bank. Next slide. And then here are our transfers to reserves. So as we have our standing transfers, you'll note one change, the vehicle amount used to be $70,000 a year, now it's 100. And that just reflects what we know about this latest buy, and making sure that in the next four-year timeframe, when it's time to entertain this, that we do have enough in our capital reserve. Nothing else changed, though, as far as the other county vehicles and equipment or the 27 pay periods. So as you probably recall, we do a $600,000 flat funding for all capital, including these standing transfers. And so it just helps stabilize our budgeting for the county's budget. So the balance of the 600,000, because we don't have very much on the previous slide, means we're going to put 260,000, and would propose to deposit that back into the Capital Reserve Fund. And then I mentioned the $600,000 placeholder for the interest-only payment. That was connected to a $680,000 payment that dropped off our books two Januaries ago. Last year, we transferred the whole 680,000 into our capital reserve, but this year, because we built in 600 for the interest-only payment, that left $80,000 that we would also recommend depositing into capital reserves. And at the bottom, the Nursing Home Reserve Fund. In last year's budget, we took $300,000 out of it in anticipation of a project starting, and that revenue would help us offset a decrease in census associated with the project. Because the project didn't go forward, we basically took money out of the Nursing Home Reserve Fund, and of course, it got incorporated into our current budget, so we're trying to put some of it back. We're not putting all 300,000 of it back, but if we can manage to keep this 200,000 going back into the Nursing Home Reserve, that will get it back up to $2.5 million, which, again, if the nursing home project goes forward, puts us in a very strong position to deploy those funds to help offset a census drop during construction. Because as we know, the construction project, right off the bat, we're going to lose a little corner of the building because they won't have windows. And so I can't remember the number of rooms, but it's pretty significant. And so we could deploy whatever, up to $1 million a year for a couple of years, and not have to experience a serious revenue gap in our operations. Next slide. This is the listing of our county grants. We had our typical county grant interview day with the commissioners and the Executive Finance Committee, so this listing is a result of that. And, oh, we're getting down to the end. I didn't even check time. Okay. I mentioned last year that we crossed over the threshold, so there you can see it. This is as of last year's audit, so I got out of the business of trying to prognosticate where it'll be at this year's audit, because there's just too many moving parts. It would just be a complete waste of everyone's time. So the fund balance target does change, because that's pegged to having enough money in the bank for two months of operations exclusive of the nursing home. So this is just our general fund portion of our budget. And so last year, it was about 3 million, and so this year, it kind of goes, it's indexed with the total budget. So as things increase, that target will increase as well. But that's what it's based to, is it's baselined with two months of operating expenses that we could cover in the bank. We've shown this slide every single time. It's just, it's good business sense, and it's good for our taxpayers to have a healthy fund balance and allow us to absorb some unexpected and unpleasant surprises. And this slide is largely unchanged. Again, if you look back over the 11 years, things haven't changed a whole lot until this year, admittedly. But what I added for, just a baseline comparison to provide a little bit of context, that blue line is a, assuming that we had done a 1 and 1/4% tax increase every year, starting back in FY '11. 1 and 1/4% doesn't sound like much, and certainly, it's well below what we typically see in a year of what our budget increases should be, just because you think about the personnel costs comprising about 70% to 75% of our budget, and staff costs, whether it's healthcare or the New Hampshire retirement system, or just salary growth based on cost of living. To keep our entire county budget at 1 and 1/4% would be a huge success. So I thought that was a fairly conservative number to peg for the slope. Where this line ends is at 15 and 1/2 million. So I guess, even though this is bad news, and I'm not trying to really sugarcoat it, I'm just trying to offer another perspective, so you don't shoot me, is that, yes, this is bad news, yes, this hurts, yes, I wish I was not here telling you that we were having practically a 10% tax increase, but I would say, over the last 11 years, the county has done really, really well. And I think, you know, compared to just what a modest 1 and 1/4% figure would be, we're still well under that. So for what it's worth, I just thought it would be an interesting way to try to reframe this year's proposed increase. And then we updated the numbers. Inflation, I read some stuff today about CPI. I think, I don't know if Mary, you've got that slide in the next briefing, we can talk about it more under the nursing home context, but, you know, if we're still 7 and 1/2, 7.7 percentage points below what inflation has done, I think we're doing pretty good. And that is all I had, other than the next slide. Kirsten, if you want to show that. These slides are available, if anybody is watching from home, if they're still awake. That is an active hyperlink, but you can also go on the county's website and find a copy of those slides.
Commissioner Hubert, do you have anything else or any remarks?
I know, I'll just, I'll just answer the question. Any of you have any?
Okay, questions either from the, or the public, right?
From the public, too, yeah. I know the delegation, I'm not sure how confused your situation is, but whether you can speak or not. But is there anybody from the public that would like to say anything?
I do. Just one comment, I think it would be helpful if we knew town by town what the impact would be on the property tax bill in dollars amount. For a lot of people to follow what was just presented, would be somewhat beyond that capacity to understand it, because they're not used to looking at something like this. Everyone thinks in common sense, numbers of dollars and cents. So if we could have town by town an idea of what it meant in actual dollars for the county public of the tax bill, for a house that's valued at, let's say, 150,000 to 200,000.
Yeah, we get that question all the time, and that is, I'd be guessing, and I don't like doing it, because if I'm guessing, then what's the point? I'm either going to... The process of these numbers getting taken by DRA, they go through the apportionment, they allocate this total tax bill across all the municipalities, but because the assessing process varies, that's why it's an equalized valuation. They have to account for all the variations in the assessing that's done. So taking that, whatever dollar amount they get apportioned to each municipality, and then factoring in that municipality's budget, the school budget, and then whatever the number of the county budget is, that's well above my pay grade and expertise, and the only thing I could do is look at all of last year's data and say, well, if I just did a 9.76% increase, this is what it would be. But that would be primarily, I think, a useless exercise.
I don't think you'd be after it.
Screen sharing and let those out of the room.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So I could give a number, but it would be a guess, and I...
Yeah, I don't know how much utility there is in that.
Don't see anything there.
Are you finished? I mean, you're forcing, I know. Any other questions? I think we can ask members of the delegation, want to ask any questions about that presentation? Okay, so I guess, unless there's any other questions, the only thing is, I wanted to set the date, and, I mean, it's my, I have the authority to set the date, but I wanted to be sure that the date that I was thinking of is Tuesday, June 29th, and at 6:00 PM. I'm not sure of a site, whether we've looked at a site. I'd be happy to do it here, but I don't know. If we had to do the Lou Thompson Room or someplace in Newport, I'd be willing to go to Newport, I think, to alternate. Yes, is any, is every, can everybody here and on Zoom, they can make Tuesday, June 29th? Because I need, we need a quorum. Yes, go ahead, please, Rep.
No, I'm just...
You can, okay, all right, I'm sorry. Okay, and Representative Merchant, you had your hand up?
I can do it by Zoom.
You can do it by Zoom, okay. Is anybody else not, members not going to be able to attend? And also, I asked, we'll ask Representative Oxingham and Sullivan, too, just... Okay, yes, Representative Stapleton.
The time that you were anticipating commence this?
6:00 PM. Okay, will you be able to attend, right?
Yeah, unless it's in the morning.
It's in the morning, so in other words...
Well, what time were you planning on?
I was thinking in the evening, but if we wanted to do it during the daytime, I mean, I think we should be done in Concord. I mean, we, of course, the EFC is now working on the budget, and it's up to them. They would make a presentation, and I'd open up the public, I don't know, Representative Gottlieb, I don't know what you would think about the 29th, doing it during the daytime.
Do we have a problem with the evening?
I don't have a problem, just for the public to attend and be easier, I don't know. But if we want to do it at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, the 29th, but I'm...
Let's see who can do that.
Okay.
6:00 PM is fine with me.
Okay, all right, okay. Is everybody else okay with 6:00 PM on Tuesday, June 29th? Yes?
Representative Sullivan and Representative Oxingham are on the Zoom.
Okay, yeah, and I want to be sure, Representative Oxingham and Sullivan, are you available that date? Can you hear me?
Something has to...
It's lighting up, it doesn't...
Take the mute off, Kirsten, maybe?
I don't want to set a date if not... Brian's okay with it. Okay, thank you, Representative Sullivan. What about Representative Oxingham? Okay, there you go. And I did talk to Representative Smith a few minutes before we started, and he didn't seem to have an objection to the 29th. So I think it sounds, it appears to me that everybody can make it, so that we will have a quorum. I mean, Representative Merchant, I know you will be doing it by Zoom, but we'll be able to participate by Zoom, because it looks like there will be a quorum to participate virtually. Okay, all right, okay. So we will do it, I mean, the only thing is, it's the county manager working with him about a site.
Is this room here?
Manager Ferland. Do you think this room might be available for Tuesday, the 29th, at 6:00 PM, or would you like...
I'll ask. I got to speak with the landlord.
Okay, ask the landlord. I mean, and if necessary, I would encourage you to look at the Lou Thompson Room, another possibility, or if that's not available, look at other sites. But just please keep me in the loop as far as when we draw up the agenda and the notice, and we've got to do everything properly here, as I was reminded earlier. But we will plan to do that. I will plan to do it so that we will come out of recess, and then hopefully, I'm going to adjourn that meeting and go on to the budget. I mean, my main priority is getting the budget, and I know all of us are here concerned about the nursing home, but I think right now, we should be, this is my opinion, concerned past the budget first, and then go back to nursing home, and if we are lucky, we can hopefully resolve the nursing home issue in the next few months. That would be my hope. And the presentation that follows will hopefully, I'm going to stay to listen tonight, and I talked to the county manager earlier about this, and I'm looking forward to it. The only other thing is, is this is an announcement that Representative Merchant and I did meet with an architect and concerned citizen, Ingrid Nichols of Plainfield. And she is an architect that has worked on Stevens High School, getting them to produce a lower-cost plan after it was rejected by the voters in 2009. She has also worked, she and her, the team, the Cheshire, have worked on the Maplewood Nursing Home in Cheshire County. And she has some concerns about the plan, and she's, I know, Representative Merchant and I, and she came to me. She read about our, in the Valley News, about our last meeting, which was very contentious. She came to me. I did not solicit her, neither did Representative Merchant. I want to be very clear about that. We met with her, free of charge, she didn't want to charge us, but she and the Cheshire County, the Maplewood core team, would like to meet with us sometime in July, because, by the way, we pass a budget on June 29th, we have to come back within 30 days to approve the minutes under state law. So we're going to have to meet sometime within 30 days of June 29th, which I would guess is around, certainly by July, or June, July 28th, and something like that. So I don't know if people are available, I know we're all busy, but I would like, tonight's meeting, I think we should, I'm going to stay and listen, but I would also like at this meeting, and all the commissioners, Representative Merchant, you can solo the commissioners, and everybody will be invited to this meeting, like, hopefully, everybody will stay for the meeting afterwards tonight. Yes?
Thank you, Chairman, and good year. A minute ago, you had mentioned that, you know, it's important for us to address the budget first before we address the nursing home renovation.
That's my opinion.
But that being said, if we are developing a budget, wouldn't we have to know whether we are going to proceed with a nursing home project or not, because the budget has got to incorporate either going ahead with a renovation plan or not? So it would seem that, you know, we would have to have made that decision beforehand. It's a chicken and a egg thing, I guess, but, you know, this budget that the commissioners have presented to us tonight, it would seem to me that this is a budget that assumes that we are going ahead with a nursing home project, even though the delegation hasn't voted on doing so. And I am, you know, still looking at this and saying, well, the delegation should have to come up with a decision as to whether or not we are going to proceed with this, because there's money involved, certainly, but also, the budget will have to incorporate, you know, first-year payment on the bond, and all the associated costs with going to that. So I don't, I don't see how we can proceed with crafting a budget if we don't know what we're budgeting for.
Okay, well, we need to, Representative, your point is well-taken, Representative Aaron. The thing we have to remember is that the budget, we can pass by a simple majority. I prefer that it be unanimous, but simple majority, whereas the nursing home, the bond, we need a 2/3. And again, I'd like it to be unanimous, if we can come to some sort of agreement. And I'm not sure whether we're ready yet to deal with a nursing home. So my, and I mean, it's, this is my suggestion, of course, the EFC, that's up to, maybe we budget some extra money to take care of some repairs that might happen in the next few months in the Capital Reserve, because we've got to do that, I mean, to extra, just in case we don't pass a bond to deal with the nursing home. I think we still, we still have to take care of the nursing home, but if we can put extra money and make sure to make the necessary repairs, and as I said, my hope would be that we would pass something to deal with the, but it's a 2/3 majority, 2/35 majority, excuse me, yes?
In response to that, though, how will we know how much money to put aside for repairs if we have no idea what kind of problems will pop up? I mean, there could be a problem that pops up that is so extensive that it will force us to do a renovation. And I am just very concerned about, you know, it's not like you can tuck away, you know, $300,000, $500,000 in anticipation of something going wrong, but, you know, I don't have, none of us have a crystal ball. And so, to me, that seems to put us at a very great risk to go ahead and proceed that way.
I see your point. Representative Tanner, please, followed by Representative Merchant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, it's my understanding that there's no bond payment in the first year, it's simply the interest payment, which we've talked about. The second thing is that I'd like to point out that we do have a capital reserve fund with the nursing home to take care of problems such as that. And I guess my third point is that even if we approve the renovations, there's still going to be a number of months before, years before some of these repairs that we've been talking about need to be addressed and could be problematic in the near term. So I think, I think we need to be prudent, physically prudent. I think we need to make sure that we are all on board and do the correct thing, the best thing for Sullivan County, not only for the nursing home, but for the citizens of Sullivan County. So I'd like us to take our time.
Okay, thank you, Representative Tanner. Representative Merchant, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I concur with my fellow colleague, Representative Tanner, that there's a short-term issue as a long-term issue. One is a short-term issue, we have problems with the counting home currently, that no one knows the risk factor. Totally agree with that. So therefore, I think we should hedge our bet and put money aside somewhere, we have in the capital reserve fund, to take care of something if it does arise, because we have an obligation to maintain that building while we're going through the decision. We make a decision even tonight, it's going to take at least 18 to 24 months for a building to be erected and taken care of. So we have to think about, what are we doing over that period of time to ensure the buildings can be occupied? Number two, the offer on the table for somebody to come in and talk about what Maplewood did is to try to learn from them, is to try to understand, why did they do what they did? What could be learned from that process? It's, she's a taxpayer in Sullivan County, she came to you, Chair. We do not solicit the input. And if I could, I'd like to open it to Mr. Putnam. I think Mr. Putnam spoke with her before, as far as works with the...
Excuse me, could I interrupt for a minute?
Sure.
This really has nothing to do with the budget. The EFC is working on the budget that we just proposed, and I really don't think it's the place for a discussion by the delegation for the nursing home project. The commissioners are going to present all the questions and all, and give you all the answers that you've been asking for, for the last three months. And so I would ask that this line of questioning and whatever debate.
And I'm looking forward to that section tonight, Commissioner Hewitt, so hopefully I'll learn something.
I'd love to ask a question.
Also schedule something, think about some dates if you don't. I mean, and get back to me in the next few days, because July tends to be busy if we don't set a date. But we've got to come in, if we pass a budget, remember, we do have to vote on the minutes within 30 days. That's state law. So I, I'm going to have to schedule a meeting, assuming we pass a budget on the 29th. Yes, Representative...
Representative Smith brought the issue up about the recess meeting, so I'm still not sure if we can move forward, how we move forward, because in order to have a delegation meeting and vote on the budget, we have to have an official meeting. So I'm not sure exactly what the sequence is. You've referenced some sort of an R.S.A. I think we need to really be sure that we can have a delegation meeting in some capacity, so I'm not sure exactly who's going to be the person to work our way through that and weave it through. Because I hate to get us here on 29th and find out that we haven't done something based upon whatever it is, and then all of a sudden, back in the same place we are tonight, because we can have a discussion, but we can't have a vote.
Right. Well, I think it's a matter of bringing us out of recess, and then...
Prior to the June...
I don't know, if there was a motion on the floor, have to deal with that motion, I mean, and then adjourn the meeting. But of course, also someone, the makers could adjourn, withdraw that motion, too, and that's up to them. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that's something that we can research in the interim, that it doesn't, we can't solve that problem tonight, so.
Okay, all right. And Representative Smith had to leave early from the engagement. I think he wants to talk to me further about this, and I'm willing to sit down and talk with him about the legalese. But I think we need to get going, and my concern, first of all, is the budget, and making sure we have enough money in place to take care of the problems, any prob, short-term problems that deal with the nursing, and then focus long-term. Yes, go ahead, please, Representative...
I just wanted, we've already set the date. I'm guessing that any older, new business, we can't...
No, okay.
...take care of because of...
And I promise, no votes. I mean, I'm just, you know, having the discussion.
At this point, we're pretty much done.
Okay. So I guess that's it, and anybody else have any other questions or comments? So if you could get back to me with dates as quickly as possible in July, within the next week, otherwise, I may set, you know, but as I said, I'm just, we need to vote on the minutes anyway, regardless if we don't do anything else. Yes, Representative Tanner?
May I move to adjourn?
Okay. I don't... Okay, I think Representative Smith, so in that spirit, because I guess we'll just simply, we're done, because it's more of the commissioners' thing, so...
This is a non-meeting.
Non-meet, not, it's, yeah, as far as we're concerned. Now, the commissioners, whenever you're ready to start your presentation, thank you very much, everybody, and I encourage members of the delegation to stay.